Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee Home Meeting. Today is Monday, March 18th, 2024. It's 5 o'clock PM. Thank you all for being here. We do have a couple of operational items to tackle before we get into our consent agenda and some more things. Like a presentation and we're going to be here for a little while learning. Let's start with our operational item to appear at seven and eight tomorrow night. For that, we welcome our community development director, Mr. Mark Hunt. Mark, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. A couple cases go over for you this evening. Case 24014 at 1017 State Street. So not too far from where we're at right now. Is a rezoning from R2 to C1. Here in our downtown. The applicant is SJP Homes LLC operated by Mark Amber Holmes. Again, 1017 Grant Street. The lot five block 17 of our real addition is the is the parcel that we're talking about right here. And they want to go from R2 to C1. Full background on our analysis. Future land use for this area is urban, low intensity, being upgraded to urban medium intensity. So we're planning for more intense use in our downtown. The UMI will be adopted as part of our comp plan here in the coming weeks. The C1 zoning would align with either. So C1 could come in under either land use type. And certainly would align with UMI very well. Right now, R2, but you'll see the block to the south is a commercial block, C3 and C1. And there is one lot already that's transferred over to a C1 on the corner. So kind of expecting this block to continue to transform into more commercial use with this with this application indicating that as well. We also did an analysis on our downtown master plan. This would fall in the Westbridge District. And this this single lot roughly in this neck of the woods here. We'd look for this area to have small scale redevelopment. So rezoning to meet that redevelopment would come through. That would make sense. We look for large scale redevelopment south of State Street in this area. So maybe larger projects coming in this region someday. And then they'll probably continue to have a mix of residential on the northern edge of the Westbridge District. So we do see redevelopment down here. We have comp plan alignment. We also have downtown master plan alignment. For those reasons, we did have a staff report that was positive and a planning zoning commission that did recommend approval. And if I did mention it, the use would be a commercial retail use. So not moving the structure, not tearing the structure down, but just using it for a real estate office, insurance office, that type of thing. I'd be happy to answer questions, Your Honor.
Questions for Mark on this one? Go on to my left and to my right. Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Once we rezone it though, they can do whatever they want, right? Within C1?
Within the combines of the property. So the limits of that property are rather small. So the
Oh yeah, those are small lots.
Keeps it probably just use the existing building.
But I guess I'm concerned that on the other side, the alley behind them, you know, those are still residential residential homes there. And therefore we wouldn't want undesirable businesses coming in there just because we turned it into C1.
So so to the south of them across the alley is commercial already. It's already zoned commercial. To the north of them, for sure, residential residential district pretty well established still.
Mark, if I may, the downtown overlay standards would still qualify council member sex or so.
Okay.
Those prohibited uses would still be in effect regardless of the zoning class.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mark? All right, we'll take these up tomorrow as items to appear seven and eight. Let's move to nine and 10, Mark, please.
Case 24009 is at 6500 Crow Creek Road. Adam Seitz doing business is Pheasant Creek Estates. Just orient you a little bit here. This is Crow Creek. You have school use here, kind of an undeveloped piece that's existed for some time. You may remember there's a a large retaining wall along this property kind of oriented you in your mind. Twenty point one seven acres more or less to go from A1 to R2 for a single family residential district. Twenty three homes planned for this subdivision. So really kind of matching the lower intensity use that you're seeing in the surrounding neighborhoods. A future land use map that does show urban low intensity, both in the current map and the forthcoming map we're working on. I think that's important to note. A1 under holding zone. So A1 is what things start out as and then they change from there. We do see the R1 making or R2 making a lot of sense in this case, given that it's it's residential up next to a school. I think I did mention 23 lots. And we'll talk a little bit about alignment here. Twenty three is an important number because at 29 or more or at 30 or more, and you start to need more connectivity for fire and EMS purposes. But since this will just be 23, we're going to potentially allow just a single point of access at this time. Now that will change with future development and we can talk about that here in a second. The concept for the rezoning shows a lot layout here. So you have kind of larger lots set against one right of way. This will be a public road connecting up from Crow Creek. There will not be connection here as this is private ownership and is not part of the the application that's in front of you. It's owned outside separately from this application. We would however require future connectivity to the north. That's why the street's stubbed in the way it is. And it would connect to Winfield Court just just off this map. Again, that would be a requirement of a future developer. That has a positive recommendation and the planning zoning commission also provided a positive recommendation in February 21st.
Any questions? Frank?
Yes, Your Honor. Mark, is there only one way in and out of that property for emergency vehicles to use? Because I thought we were trying to get away from that.
Yeah, we are. And that's right. There's one way now. If it goes beyond, if it grows continues to the north and hits that 2930 units will require connectivity at Winfield Court. So that's planned for the future and this road is being developed to continue that right away to the north. And Winfield Court is just off this map, just to the north, right about you're in your map. And then Winfield Court provides all the way out to 53rd.
How wide's the road?
I think it's That's our standard 53 footer, I think.
Okay.
Mark, for clarification, I just pulled up my map because like you said, the connection is off off of this map. So the pigeon is that Pigeon Creek Trail that is that'll can remain a dead end.
Yeah. And you might recall the memo, I think I provided last council member that gave you the history of that because we looked a lot at that when we were bringing this through PNC. At the time, when that first came through, 53rd here was going to connect all the way over to the east. And there was only one connection to this neighborhood, the Pigeon Creek Trail neighborhood for our purposes here. The city abandoned the 53rd extension. That project went away. And they main they provided connectivity to this neighborhood by going north and south. So just off this map, you now have a north and south interest into this Pigeon Creek Trail neighborhood, if you will. So they're served two points of entry. They're not needing another point of entry. So the city has then allowed in the last 15 years, allowed these two these two plan owners to develop and build on their property if they will, knowing that that connection is no longer necessary.
And so where would this one then connect to?
Yeah, Winfield Court. It's just the north here.
Can you pull up a near map or?
Straight north.
Or do you have a map that shows it, Mark?
Yeah, because I'm seeing settler point.
Type in 6500.
The Northside about Walters Edition?
Yes. There it is.
So again, this is the property we're talking about. Here's Crow Creek Road. There's private ownership here. Connectivity was established prior to allow two points of entry into this neighborhood. You got one from the north and one from the south. And then Winfield Court, should a future developer come in, will have to connect.
I see. Okay. I couldn't see that little stub there. Okay. All right. Got it. Thank you. Right, you know what? I do have another question on from from the southern part of the development to Winfield. What is, do we know what the appropriate number of single family homes would be on that northern section? Have we have we looked? I'm just thinking from a planning perspective. So we have the, you know, changing the zoning for this this part just off of Crow Creek. Once that is developed, what would be the approximate, have we looked at the approximate amount of homes that could fit between that?
Twenty three is what they're they're planning, 23 homes.
He's talking about north.
North of that. So after this development.
Is there another 23, 32, 58?
Is it just based on what somebody?
So smaller. If they did the similar sized lot than an R2 type zoning.
Right.
That would establish your lot size. Save some room for right of way.
Mark, if I could add to that, that if you remember, that piece has already rezoned R1. So you're going to have larger lot sizes to begin with. And the terrain is pretty nasty on about half of that piece of property. So you've really only got one road heading north, south, and then it's going to tie right into Winfield. So it's going to limit the density that you can put in there.
Other other questions?
Yes, Greg. Thank you, Your Honor. Pigeon Creek Trail, as it ends right now, it just ends in a dead end street? And it's intended to stay just as a dead end street then from this point forward?
It is. The only thing we can do about that now at this point is we can condemn land and try to dig dig land if we want to. That's the council decision. I think because you have connectivity already and you've got a route to the north, it's probably not worth the effort that that would take. And then when this does develop as a single family home, we'll have that driveway reinforced to allow turnaround for city vehicles.
Okay, where your arrow is and just to the right and to the south of that, are those lots currently developed? Right there and then right above it?
There's a single family home here.
Yeah, if you go back to the beacon, it'll show us whether there's houses.
So this has some development from this adjoining landowner. He owns both pieces. So you can see he's built some drive and done some landscaping on that property there.
Okay.
This property has been
The one we need right there.
Marketed for a single family home as pet sewer infrastructure built in to accommodate a single family.
You only need one guy.
Would we want to put any kind of a hammerhead or something on that particular lot if and when it develops? Since that appears to be the last lot in the end of the of the road.
Yeah, and I think the way we've worked that out with that property owner is to reinforce that driveway a lot back.
You might need some sort of access granted as well so that the guy or gal or whoever buys it knows the public will be using it as a turnaround.
Yeah.
Yeah. Greg, there will be a document recorded against that property to reflect that. We've had it in several other subdivisions where we've had to do it temporarily, but it's always been on the plat. And since that's not a platted lot, we have already talked to the developer about getting something recorded at.
Thank you, sir.
Why not just work with him now to make the connection?
Yeah.
It's one property owner with point seven eight acres. So you're going to go down a little bit. We could, I don't know that you'd have to condemn it. You could buy it for whatever reasonable price it is and move the trail onto this new property.
So we've we've approached them and asked about that and they've declined to do that. They're not interested in selling us the property.
And it would be two property owners. It would be the north and the south.
Little bit here.
It's hard to see on the beacon, but the curve that's already half constructed there basically splits between those two properties.
And this is the guy's second property. He's probably not doing anything with it. Has he been approached? You know, he wants that the way it is. He's got a little bit of a circle there and.
Right. I know we've talked to this property owner. I'm not I'm not familiar with this property owner. The campaign I'm not familiar with. AGI, I have talked.
I'm just struggling with the logical sense. Why not just connect it? Other questions for Mark? Yes, Greg.
Thank you.
Another Greg.
The first
Haven't figured that out yet.
First, can you go back to the first picture? Had that odd shape right there. What, just out of curiosity, what's the what's with that little thing to the right there? Kind of a triangle. Right angle there. Yeah.
Yeah, that's just the way the lot has been divided over sales over the years.
That's going to be somebody's backyard.
That'll probably be flood plain.
Okay.
So that'll just be now a lot of flood.
There's some
comes through here. No area.
Okay.
So we go to the concept. That's mainly floodway.
Okay.
Mark, I can tell you, the developer has approached the adjoining property owners on the other side of the creek to see about a land swap with that. Because they physically can't access that point without crossing the creek.
Other question? All right, that'll appear tomorrow night as items nine and 10. Let's move to our consent agenda items. First, this consent are by our chief Troy Say.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is dealing with the agreement for the Scott County Fire District One in our services. I believe the agreement is in your packet. We added some some maps to help define it a little bit. So if you take a look at your first map, it'll show the 16 different fire jurisdictions within Scott County. And if you find number one, you'll find Bettendorf. I don't know if that's coincidence or not, but it's there. If you go obviously to the east and north a little bit is Leclerc, north of that is Princeton. And if you take a look at Princeton on that first map, it shows that white shaded area. That's that's the city limits of Princeton. So anything outside that is actually Scott County Fire District One. For Princeton, same thing with Leclerc and then obviously Bettendorf. The next map defines it a little bit better. If you start at Princeton, that fuchsia color is all Scott County Fire District One. And then you see the darker area, which is the city limits, drop down to Leclerc, same thing, fuchsia, Fire District One. That that darker gray area is Leclerc. And then Bettendorf is really defined. If you find the two small sections, the olive color, that's Scott County Fire District One, which we serve. And then obviously our city limits down below that. We are compensated for responding to the fire district. And that's based on tax levy rate. I think it's point six zero seven five per thousand of the total assessed value. So that's how we're compensated. As far as I know, as long as I know, we've had this agreement. It's a five year agreement, basically just providing fire EMS and other rescue services to that district. So I would ask if you have any other questions?
Questions, Troy.
Your Honor, just to the the amount of money that we receive from that is pretty nominal. And and there's no, they they're maxed on the levy. So the fire trustees can't levy anymore. That that's the maximum amount. And this is the way that it's been distributed for a long time.
Yeah.
We just stayed with the original distribution.
Yeah, I averaged the last five years for our contract. And the average per year was a little over $66,000. In 2023, we're a little over 70,000. So it does keep growing. We have basically nine quadrants that we respond to for Fire District One out of the 40 that we have in our jurisdiction. And average, I think, was over the last five years, we had 143 responses out to Fire District One out of the almost 5,000 calls we did last year. So not a ton of responses out there. But once again, fire service isn't really designed to make money. It's to provide a service. And I'm sure those people east of Criswell appreciate that and north of Indiana out there. So.
Right, Jay?
Your Honor, Decker made the point. I was just going to emphasize that I think this is a good agreement because I'm a strong believer in intergovernmental cooperation. And here's an instance where Bettendorf can help other communities. I think that's a good thing.
Any other questions?
Just, yeah, next. Thank you, Your Honor. Chief said, do we know when the last time this this contract was changed in any capacity? Again, I don't, this is my first time ever seeing it. So I just was curious from your perspective.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. The history that I personally have on it goes back to 2013. And the tax levy rate has changed, obviously.
Sure.
But they are maxed. And I think that's Iowa code. And I'm sure Mr. Kern can talk to talk about that. It's based on tax levy. It's Iowa code 359.43. But anything beyond that, I couldn't become providing information.
I was just curious.
Yeah, okay.
We we actually inherited this. This was covered by the Pleasant Valley Fire Department when it was all volunteer. And when we took that volunteer service over, we inherited that district.
Got it.
So that's how it started. And we just inherited the the amount of the levy that they were receiving. We've not, we've not decided to change or attempt to change the agreement. We just inherited and and it's grown with us. So.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion to approve this being considered on consent as R tomorrow night.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Let's move to consent S. Our Human Resources Director Kathleen Richland and Finance Director Jason Shat. You have the floor?
Thank you, Your Honor. Kathleen and I are really probably more excited about this opportunity than a lot. But it's a continuation of our work to implement some new technologies that will provide some efficiencies for the organization and really really be a game changer for us. As you know, we're in the the last stages of implementing Oracle NetSuite on the financial side. That's scheduled to be done around June 1st with payroll steps to follow later in the summer. And then complimentary to that, we are asking for your consideration of a contract with UKG to provide a similar type of technology for the HR side, the timekeeping side that will mesh very nicely with NetSuite. They are a company that's well established in the space. They do work for several municipalities around the state and they have existing integrations with NetSuite. So we think this is just a perfect match for the for what we're trying to do and an extension of our ERP project as it's budgeted over the last couple of years.
Can I? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, I agree with Jason. We were reviewed other entities extensively. We feel that this will create such an efficiency from the moment somebody applies all the way through to onboarding so that we can be more paperless because we are very paper right now. And then it flows into time and attendance, and then it goes right into the finance system with payroll. I think what was really great about UKG was the fact that it already has a lot of experience in other cities. So there's a lot of similarities with the different coding for the different departments because we're kind of specialized with police and fire. So we're very excited and we're hopeful that you'll approve this to go forward.
Questions for Kathleen or for Jason? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I assume this has been included in next year's budget?
It has. It's part of the the overall ERP project, if you could call it that. As you recall, we did very well on the on the financial side. So we have a little bit of cushion within the budget to bring on these extra pieces when when they're appropriate.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I'm a big supporter of technology to help make everybody's lives a little bit easier. But during the discussions with UKG, has there was there any discussions around what the value is going to be to the city on reduced time from a paper perspective? That's a huge, I'm sure that's a huge factor from a savings perspective. Have we been able to put sort of dollars to that yet?
I I don't know that we've put dollars. All of the vendors really hammered on that point as we analyze the different software options in this area. But I will tell you that today, the the payroll process alone, and I can I can speak to that. Kathleen can speak to the the HR side, but the the payroll process alone is hugely time intensive, very manual, very paper based. By going to a timekeeping system that's completely automated and feeds right into payroll, we will save countless hours of of work and ideally put put those resources towards jobs that have a little bit more impact for the city. You know, if we can reduce and eliminate some of these manual processes, automate these manual processes. I think our people can be doing better, higher level work.
Thank you. Other questions? Greg?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't want to be appear to be dense here, but can you, in layman's terms, can you give me like the top three things? Payroll. What else does it do? Does it keep track of personnel record? What is, what else does it do?
Everything from hire to fire is what they say.
Yeah. So it it goes right from the beginning for applicant tracking for employees to, you know, apply right off the bat. And then the information, instead of us pulling the information as we do now from the system and create a folder, it'll feed to the onboarding, which will be online so that instead of filling out paper as we do now.
Sure.
Then it they will be able to do it online or the employee or future employee would be able to do it online. And then that information just automatically goes into the payroll system. And then it incorporates with the time and attendance. So right now, for example, you know, we do, like I said, payroll, we do the applicant online. Then we got to print it out. Then we got to give a folder to payroll. Payroll enters that information in again. And then we get the pay the folder back. So there's a lot of time and energy in that aspect. The in regards to the end user, that would be the the employee. Once we get this up and running, they'll be able to look at the information online or on their phone or on an app. So the the entire process goes from manual paper, in my opinion, to just seamless right through so that we're not having to, oh, why don't you enter this now? And okay, I'll double check that. So it just seamlessly goes through. Does that help you?
Does this get rid of personnel files?
No.
It's still going to be paper?
Yeah, we still have those in paper right now.
How about training?
How about?
Does that do anything with training records?
Training records? Well, we have that a little bit of both because we have the new system with we just talked about today. And then we have other training that's online through IMWCA as well. So we have a little bit of both on that aspect.
Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, then I'd entertain a motion that this remain on consent as item S for tomorrow night. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's move to item T. This is for our Director of Culture and Recreation, Jim Kidwell, and our City Administrator, Decker Pla.
This item is to enter into a professional services agreement with Food Drink Friends to operate the grill at Palmer Hills Golf Course. This will be the second year. Just to highlight a couple of changes that we made for this upcoming contract. Instead of paying them the $4,000 a month, we eliminated that payment. And we decided to split the revenue earnings 6535 with Food Drink Friends. So that eliminates our monthly payment to them. We were able to secure about just under $40,000 in profit last year from the agreement. So that's that's one of the changes. We also negotiated a little different time, opening timeframe. And they are also going to install their own POS system to make things a little bit easier on the accounting end for them. So.
Your Honor, I would also highlight that in the agreement last year, the point of sale equipment was ours. So it was very cumbersome with them on the course. Their system now is going to be the entire point of sale system with the exception of the forge, which we will still operate. John wanted to do that because he uses those people between his outside cart range activities as well as at the forge. But the forge acts more like a convenience store, as Michelle reminds me, where we sell a beer. But we don't serve other than that. We just sell the beer and they leave. But all of the alcohol sales and or food sales will be in its entirety by Food Drink Friends on the course. And it's their liquor liability for the entire course. And we're named insured on that policy. We worked that out with ABD. We think having them have the point of sale system be theirs will be a lot easier on all their employees because they have they had to learn their point of sale system when they're working. because they have, they had to learn their point of sale system when they're working at Tangled Wood or their other operations, then come learn ours. And it was pretty cumbersome. This is the same point of sale system they have in their other operations and on the golf course. So we think it's just going to be much more efficient. We also have worked out, correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, where there's a couple of preferred vendors that they can recommend for outside catering if they don't want to use Food Drink Friends. Some of the, like golf tournaments want to use a particular other vendor for that. There's a mechanism for that if they want to utilize that and not use the Food Drink Friends to provide that service. So all in all, I think we had a, we had a good experience. We think the enhancements that we made is making it a really good experience. We think they're already working with John today onsite with no contract, handling the beer and beverage while we've been open in this kind of weather, so. But we think it's a nice upgrade from where we were and we're excited to get going with him.
Questions? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. From a budget standpoint, do we figure that that 40,000 apparent profit last year covered our other costs? Because we still, we still have costs for custodial and utilities and whatever.
You know, when you consider the, we paid, we paid in that first year contract, the $4,000 a month commission to Food Drink Friends. We probably closer to broke, break even when you get our profit share. That's why we really prioritized getting that piece of the contract out and taking a little bit smaller piece of the profit share. So I think this year we'll, we will certainly cut into those costs more effectively than in, in the new contract than we did in the last contract.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that consent T remain for consideration for our evening.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up tomorrow. Are there any remaining consent agenda items? Any particular council member would like to discuss or ask a question about at this time? Remaining consent. Okay, let's entertain a motion to approve all remaining consent agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Consent will be considered as written. All right. Now we welcome our City Administrator, Decker Plaine, Police Chief Timble, and City Engineer Brent Morlock to give us an update on the stop signs and speeding enforcement.
Chief, do you want to start? You want me to?
So after hearing, hearing the, the council's priorities, this is kind of the, the plan of action, you know, going ahead and the, and the emphasis. And so one of the big things, I think, where we can really get out there and do this, this spring is going to be our community engagement. And while we're, you know, started conversations with the Communications Department and the mayor. So there'll be different ways of social media where that be on the, the city, the city's social media, the police department's social media and, and the mayor's message. You know, specifically, you know, highlighting that, you know, bringing, bringing up the fact that one of the, the concerns is just speeding in general, but also our, you know, our residential neighborhoods where we have, you know, we have younger families, children. And we're just bringing the awareness of being cautious in these neighborhoods, slowing down, knowing that the speed limit is 25, even if it's not posted. Those are the residential speed limits. And just treat those neighborhoods, you know, with care and caution as you're driving through those. And just bringing the attention to that. And then just the, the stepped up enforcement and awareness in our arterials and collector roads and streets where we will be more visible and putting an emphasis on, on that too. So just, I think, getting, getting that message and communicating to the community, A, from a prevention, safety standpoint, but also, you know, enforcement. There's, there's different ways we can, we can go at this. And I think using, you know, a three-pronged approach, we're, we're going to have a lot more success. And in the end, it's not about necessarily, you know, having to write more tickets as much, as much as it is getting people to, you know, be aware of the behavior and cha, and change their behavior. And, you know, the unfortunate thing is if, you know, there's going to be those times, we're going to have to take enforcement actions. But, and we, and we will. But that's, that's going to be a big, so the community engagement is really going to be a, a big aspect that we're going to really push and emphasize. I'm going to skip. Yeah, so the other thing is, as you're aware, and I've talked about in the past is, is, and, and actually I sent an email out today to all of you because it just happened. The timing, it was perfect. But we get a Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau grant every year. And it's not automatic. It's because the state likes what we're doing here and what our traffic bureau and department provides as far as enforcement. And enforcement doesn't always mean citations. Like I said, it can, it also means warnings. But we've got a $50,000 grant again for this year. And what that money can be used for is specifically for what we, what we want to do. And that can be done on everything I've talked about in community engagement, but also these special details are paying for overtime for officers on their days off to come in, work special assignments. Over the weekend, we did have a St. Patrick's Day enforcement project where we worked with Davenport Police Department, the Claire Police Department over the weekend, which was very successful. So when you have time, you can, you can take a look at that email I sent you today if you haven't seen it. But there'll be more of those type of projects, you know, throughout the year they're geared. But also it'll just be the, the day-to-day stuff where we have officers coming, like I said, on their, coming in on their days off to just specifically not assign to patrol, but just to be out there doing traffic enforcement. And well, what we will do is, is with the Traffic Bureau Sergeant, as we get these complaints in, whether it's from city council, from citizens, from our own observations, we know, you know, we know where a lot of the problems, areas are. Just making sure that we better manage the, those officers and when we're deploying them out there and rotating them around so that they're more visibly seen as a deterrent in those areas. And our traffic sergeant will manage, manage that as far as the complaints come in to make sure we're, we're addressing those. Also, just, you know, obviously with everything that's going on, you know, we've been communicating from myself to the captains, to supervisors on down. All our officers are, are aware of, of the city council's priority and on, on this. And so just getting the word out. And I can, I just know that, you know, I'm hearing a lot of good, I'm hearing a lot of good things out there as far as on the, on the radio and what our enforcement efforts are on a daily basis. We've always, and we will continue to do, you know, our school zones are a big, important thing also. We've, our traffic, our traffic officers will continue to hit and highlight those speed zones and the school zones at the peak times, especially in the morning hours. And you'll see tho, you'll see those out there. And then just as somebody, we have these, we have mobile speed trailers that we can deploy. Now, sometimes in the winter time, it's a little more difficult. But now as the weather gets better, we can strategically deploy those out into these areas to get awareness also. The other thing that those things can do is they are also, they can also read data. So they don't, even though they're, they may not be, look like they're working, they may be actually collecting data just to see. So those will be, continue to be deployed in problem areas. And that's what's nice because we can move those around as needed. And then as I, I had supplied with you some, on some data sheets, but just a real, just a, a real quick summary of over all the traffic warnings, traffic citations, arrest, people that were, had to be taken to jail. This, it, it, it really covers a lot of things. We had approximately over 7,300 traffic offenses that we either gave a citation, a warning, or they were taken to jail just in la, in last year. And that, that's a, that's pretty much for all traffic offenses. We are, over the years, what has kind of come in when we've gotten complaints from city council or citizens, a lot of times we kind of had this informal process with the police department on how to deal with, how to deal, like what was necessary? Is there more enforcement, more signage? You know, you hear, you hear things about speed, speed humps. And we always had this back and forth dialogue informally with Brent Morlock and, and our, our traffic officers and traffic department with engineering. So I think, I'm going to let Brent kind of take over and describe kind of, but I think between us talking over this, I'm going to let Brent take over. But this is something going forward, I think, the way we're going to approach these areas as far as trying to figure out if in fact there are issues and how we can deal with those as far as traffic calming or safety issues. So I'll turn it over to Brent.
Thanks, Chief. Yeah, specifically what Chief is talking about is residential neighborhoods. And as we've been through with several neighborhoods over the past, you know, let's just say five years, we see varying levels of complaints. Some may be speed based, some may be volume based. It's been a collaborative effort, but that time that it takes for the traffic officers to do the setup of the equipment, provide those reports to us, you know, that's less time that they're out in the streets being effective. So engineering is going to help and kind of take the, the lead on neighborhood traffic studies. We're going to invest in some equipment that'll help us not only track the volumes, track speed. It's also got a lot of other benefits. We've got some really old tube counters that occasionally we'll deploy for traffic counts. Cameras are the new standard and, and there's a lot of upgraded equipment that can do a lot of very cool things. So between that and our taking the, the lead role there, we're also going to put together a draft traffic calming policy that we'll bring forward to council here, probably in the next, you know, month to six weeks, some, somewhere in that range. What that'll allow us to do, right now, we don't have, you know, really any objective criteria on how to proceed if we think that a neighborhood needs some, some additional measures, whether that be signage, pavement markings, you know, all the way up to, you know, if we start kind of least intense versus most intense, if you're up to speed humps or speed tables or something like that. So we're going to put together a policy, bring that forward for your consideration. It would really allow us to get a good baseline for when we receive these complaints or when you receive those complaints, whether it warrants study at all. If it does, what are those next steps? And then, you know, we'll continue to, to work collaboratively and jointly with the, the police department if we do think conditional measures are needed.
Brent, could you also elaborate on all the school traffic zones now have the digital devices to determine speed? And how that's managed and what the possibilities are for future enhancements of all of those devices at the, every one of the schools?
Sure. So a couple of things on the speed zones. You may remember, and I guess for Nick and Greg, the New York Council members, two, two and a half years ago, somewhere in that range, maybe three years ago, we made a change to our speed zone, our school speed zones by ordinance. So we had several existing ordinances that were on the books for varying locations. Some were seven to eight and three to four PM. Some were seven to three, some were seven to four. So we talked with, specifically with Sergeant Champion at, at that point. And we agreed that we were going to do a uniform, I believe it's 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So we standardized those across the city. We also replaced a lot of aging speed signs. A lot of them had stopped working and we're still up. We've replaced them with the, the ones with the yellow backing that, that you'll see out there. Been very dependable, very reliable, very happy with the, the choice of equipment that we went with. They've got a lot of technology built into them. You can actually schedule out a full 365 degree, 365 day calendar. And they can be accessed via Bluetooth. So Andrew can actually go around, or Sergeant Measack now, and say for last week, for example, during spring break, they shut off those because the speed zones are only in effect when school's in session. You can build it in the, the calendar. If they've got a snow day, they need to do it. You can pull right up to it, make that change. And then to Decker's point, those do have the ability to collect data as well. How much of it we're using right now? Probably not as much, but that does not require a standalone trailer, for example, to have to be placed up there. It does record, record the speed data that it takes.
So, Your Honor, to maybe finish this a little bit. When we visited in goal setting, this was a big discussion item for the council and a main priority for the city. And we think that what we put in front of you is a series of options and a series of steps that we're going to take and incorporate. We think it's important to get the message out. And we've met with Angie and her team to talk about how that's going to start. We'll probably have the mayor do a mayor's message a couple of times. But we'll begin to, and we hope Sarah will do a, a nice article about this.
Slow down.
That we intend to help people understand that we think they may be going too fast in our town and we're going to begin to enforce this with a little more vigor. We think that based on the number of complaints that you'd gotten in some of the neighborhoods that we wanted a mechanism to be able to, be able to look at that objectively and put that in front of you, how we deal with that. You know, that's more signage, more enforcement. And then ultimately, if we need to put in some speed homes through wood, that's not necessarily our preferred alternative. But, but for the most part, we wanted to get the message out, we believe was your priority, that we're going to slow folks down and make it safer and we'll use our technology to our advantage and begin to do this in a, in a systematic way. And hopefully folks will start to slow down. So these are the steps that we, the chief and Brian and his team have worked out. We think it's a good start. And we're looking for your feedback and/or additional direction. But we think we hopefully have encapsulated what it is you wanted us to begin to do.
Thank you very much for presentation. Any comments on the presentation? Greg A.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I, I'm just very pleased with the plan. I think it's a phenomenal effort. I just have two questions. Are written warnings, are warnings written and verbal? Or do we even do the written's anymore?
That we do, we do all three. Verbal, written, and then a citation.
A citation, okay.
Most, most, most warnings are going to be written warnings, but it does not something that goes on a driving record.
Right, right.
It's a conversation that, and it's an official documentation of that.
Yeah, okay. And then for the community contacts that Angie's going to be doing, do you, do you think that it would be a good idea to, to go directly to the high, to two high schools? Because that, you know, that's, that's a big percentage of people that are younger and, and drive not, not very well sometimes. Is there any plan to actually get with superintendents or whatever and, and have some education at the, at the high schools? And let, and let them know that we're cracking down?
Sure. Yeah, I think, I think probably through our, I think probably the best, yeah, we can definitely talk with the administrators. And I think talking with our, you know, our school resource officer.
Right.
Both, you know, both, both at Bettendorf High School, but also we can connect with the SRO that's at PV High School. It's with the Scott County Sheriff's Department. We know them, they work really well. And we can just, through their communication channels and with, with the students at both those places. We definitely, that's a, that's a, that's a, another, another way we can engage them. Because as we know, those, a lot of times those that, those are the younger drivers are a little more inexperienced and, and maybe not, you know. So if we can, if we can get the message across to them, the importance of it.
Something to think about. Thank you, Chief. I really appreciate the effort for everybody. It's really, really good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anything else? On my left, my right? Yes, God.
Thank you, Your Honor. Like you said, back in goal setting and the year before too, this became a hot topic. And it's because I think we're trying to be respectful and responsive to what we're hearing on the street. And I know in door knocking and just being out and about in the community, every single person is strongly feeling like it's happening in their neighborhood and it's really crazy and it's not two or three over. It's, you know, they're racing down my road at 40 miles an hour and a 25. So it's these 10 plus, you know, offenders. And I know, you know, we've all got our own stories. You know, me trying to get out of Avalon on the Spruce Hills and now those cars are coming around and they're almost, you know, tilted over. It's like, keep it on two wheels because it is really scary. So this is, I just want to double, doubly emphasize this is, the success of this will not be ticket based. I mean, it really, you don't really want to write tickets, but we do have to have a change of behavior. So, you know, there may be some cynics out there, oh, they're trying to make their quota and so on and so forth. That has nothing to do with this. But really, when you see someone, you're going down the road and they fly by you, it's, it's pretty unsettling. There's just blatant disregard for safety. And that's what we're trying to accomplish. And I think that's just being respectful and responsible is what we're hearing is to be able to try our best to get people to just be a little bit more mindful when they're out driving around because it could be fatal. But it always, it does matter. So thank you, Chief, for all your efforts.
I appreciate that, those comments. And I think, you know, our officers are, are very reasonable and, and, you know, enforcement is, is one, one aspect, but it's not the only and it's, and it, and we hope that that is not the only way we can, we can do this. And, you know, there's going to be those outliers that they're going to get the ticket, right? But, but, and they're generally going to know why they got the ticket, you know.
But that, the other one, you know, the other ones in the middle, if we can have that conversation. We can have that conversation with them. I think it could be a good win-win.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you, honor.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you for your presentation. Now we move into our strategic plan update. And for that, Mr. Plain, would you like?
I can start us off, but I would like to say one last thing on the traffic. Nick raised this in one of our comments that.
Oh, I thought you were going to say you got a ticket today.
There are, in Google Maps or, and or Waze in the app, sometimes it says on the street they're traveling on it, the speed limit is say thirty-five when it's twenty-five. All of our residential streets are twenty-five. We are trying to work with Waze and Google Maps to let them know that, that every residential street is twenty-five. But if people are counting on that as their defense, it won't work. So all of our residential streets are twenty-five. And so hopefully we'll help with Google Maps and Waze picking up on that. And hopefully people will put that into the ways or Google Maps. So enough with that, your honor, but we knew that that target was of such importance to the council that we thought we should report on it. Separate and distinct. So we put in you, in, in front of you, an update and we sent it to you over the weekend. This is the strategic planning update summary. And we start with building permits and permitting process and, and Mark will start with that one and we'll work our way down. If we, if we talk too long, you can just move us along if you're comfortable. But I wanted to make sure that we, we hit that. And for purposes of speeding enforcement, that was number seven. So we've already covered that. So Mark, you start.
And I think we could hit high points, guys, because we do have a, a written document that we, some of us have already read and highlighted and have our questions. But we certainly have that ability to do and that's, that's part of information sharing can be in writing. But go ahead and we'd love to hear.
I'll hit the salient points and I'll just kind of judge the, the expressions if people are satisfied or not and then I'll.
Better be a good judge of care.
When it comes to building permits and permitting process improvements, we have really had supportive counsel on both technology and human resources. Certainly appreciate the investment in a plans, construction plan reviewer. We've hired that person. Of course, our best candidate was from within. So now I have another vacancy to fill, to fill the spot that was left for the person that I hired. Such is life and Kathleen is, is helping me. Although I think I'm driving her crazy. So, but we really appreciate that support. So I'm going to talk about number two first on my two-pronged approach to that. And you know, we need people and, and we're getting the best people we can. They tend to be the ones we have. So we promote them and then we got to go find another person. The other side is the technology and we've spent a lot of time looking for better technology. Building permitting, construction plan reviewing and code enforcement is a very unique niche software class and doing it well is hard to find. There's a few out there. We did a lot of interviews, did a lot of talks and we're pretty happy with who we have after doing those interviews. Lama is the name of it, land and management analysis is the acronym. Lama, like the animal. But we're going to stay with them, but we're going to upgrade to a better product that's web-based. And that's really important because that web-based product takes the server responsibilities off the city of Bettendorf, puts them on the company. And that's at no charge to us. So we're going to save both time and money and become credit card or P C I compliant. Increase our compliance for the storage of customer data because now it lives in the cloud and it's taken care of by Lama. No longer have to be done in-house, which is kind of laborious and updating servers and all the things that the care and feeding that they need is now off the table. Plus it's a web-based app instead of a, a desktop-based app, works a little faster, kind of cool. You can get to it from the citizen's side from the web now, easier than you could before. We got to roll that out. We think that's going to help with just our contact with citizens when they come and requesting permits. And I'll just remind you, we did have a report to council that we provided for you back in December. Just about how we, we, we view the, the permit process and the, and the hiccups that we hit. We have a lot of things that go into a permit. Each of our code books, plumbing, mechanical, construction code, they're all phone book thick, if anybody remembers what a phone book looks like. And that's just, that's just to get, you know, through the, through the review, then those codes, then those buildings have to be inspected based on that code. So there's a lot to that process. We're pretty proud of the way we do it and we do it as fast as we can. And I would just remind you, you have that written report provided to you previously, but I can also email it to you again if you wanted.
Questions for Mark? Great. Let's make some progress. Thank you. All right, moving on. Jeff, Jeff, do you want to handle the West Bridge or West District Riverfront Development, please?
Sure, certainly I can do that. Thank you very much, your honor. So I'll break this down into three quick points. We have master plan, development agreement and funding mechanism. So the notion of a master plan, it's currently underway. As you're well aware, we've met with the development team on a couple of occasions. We've kind of just fine tuned some thoughts. You know, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? And what they're including in their scope of potential master plan is a review of the public assets as well. And we believe for access sake, there should be another point of ingress egress into this site. So we're contemplating what a road may look like underneath I seventy-four. We're contemplating what enhanced amenities at Leech Park could look like. One of those things could include even maybe a new jet. So the concept of a master plan is being vetted right now. The developers are taking the lead on that. And then we are providing support to the public side or the public facing assets to be contributed to that master plan. The second component piece would be a development agreement. We've not been presented with a development agreement by the development team yet. They're working on a, a document right now with their legal team. It's very complex, complex for a number of reasons, complex in that there's private land, there's public land, there's remnant parcels from the Department of Transportation. There a C P rail line right through the site. There's overhead power lines. There's the D N R, the Corps of Engineers. There's F H W A. So there's a number of nuances that need to be considered as part of a development agreement. So once they feel comfortable that they have a product that they could provide to us, we could then review that and consider how we wish to move forward with a developer. And then finally, funding mechanism, very complex. And I think to points one and points two that I've made, a lot of the funding is going to be contingent on how in-depth we get with this West Bridge development area. And our goal is to get a master plan that really helps support ancillary funding sources. I actually have a call with the state of Iowa on Wednesday to talk about some creative place making funding. So the, the notion of having a master plan will help support that very, very strongly as well. So I believe that'll be contingent upon what the development agreement looks like. And then we can talk more about what funding and mechanisms may look like. But I think we should all be fully prepared to consider some capital investment as part of this, capital investment for potentially a new road. Upgrades to our Leech Park. Potentially pedestrian crossings of our rail, who knows? But just at a high level right now, I think that's something that we may need to contemplate as we go into our future budget sessions. But as it is right now, we're getting closer to the concept design phase. We've taken the pie in the sky thoughts and started to have them put on paper. And hopefully the developer will have done us that plan that we can look at here very, very soon.
Awesome. Comments, thoughts? Jerry?
Thank you, your honor. How much work is left on, on, on the bridge work? You know, I know we had a memorial, veterans memorial monument that's not placed yet. And I was down there last weekend with a cleanup effort and I see there's, you know, unfinished construction.
So, yeah, the bridge construction slash demolition is virtually complete. And Brent or Brian, you might be able to help me a little bit better, but I would anticipate by the end of April first of May, the contractors will be coming to that closures of that, that area. And then at that time, if you recall, council member Sexer as well. Their agreement with us would be to demolish the site that the city owns and basically make that a pad that shovel, shovel ready for new development. So once they are closed out with their work, they will get with the city staff and we'll talk about then the closure slash demolition, demolition of that building. Jeff, I can. Question, I would say the end of April, early May.
Last I talked with Helm, the contractor that's occupying our building, they were anticipating the demo of our building to be done by the end of May. I think they were a little slower going on a few items out in the river that may have delayed that. I can check in and, and provide an update. Regarding the memorial, that is really on hold at the current time. Because the previous placement was next to the letdown structure, which council decided not to go forward with. So we need to find a new home as to where that goes. And I think a lot of the work that we're looking at for the West Bridge will help determine the best location where to put that. We haven't found a good location with the, the current configuration of the urban park that would really give it enough exposure. So it's still sitting out at Public Works to see where.
And then I know underneath the bridge there, there's a recreation path. But it doesn't connect up to the recreation paths on the levee. There's about a forty-foot gap.
Yeah, they just have not finished that section. The, the phase two of the urban park, everything south of the railroad tracks has a completion date midsummer of this year. So they still have time left to finish on that.
Yeah, Frank, thank you.
Thank you, your honor. Has the fountain arrived yet? I know it's been long coming. That's going to go in over next to the bridge. We had a, we had a, some type of special fountain. We have the four that are in there that we've used, but there was a special one.
So we had a sculpture that we were going to integrate in there. That's still our plan. We had a contractor picked out to do it and the contractor, for lack of a better term, went belly up. So Brent has actually got a contact now with a company called Portel. They're a metal fabricator that Shive Hattery put us onto. And we believe they're going to take the task of creating a concept for us to create this new sculpture. But, uh, yeah, the one that we had lined up is no longer in business. So.
Is that going to still be a fountain and sculpture?
So just a sculpture. We were planning to use basically a similar or a series of similar fountains to what we have out there to try to provide something in that center. We never got to final design. That was all concept. But I think if we can do so, we would like to add it to it. It's going to be complex to put anything out there in the center period, just of how we access the center of that pond and how you get a foundation for anything in the center. We're still struggling a bit with just the water quality that's in that pond. We get a lot of debris that comes down, that carries stormwater runoff basically from Middle Road South. And there's a big sixty-six inch culvert on the north end that, that feeds that. So I would say still ongoing, probably not going to happen this year and probably something we'll have to look out at, maybe still another year.
One thing to your point though, Councilmember Bates. I, I was on board with you as well to think that maybe we should have a major focal fountain in the middle. And Brent quickly cut me off at the knees for all the right reasons. What we have learned and much like the water quality is the depth of that pond cannot support a larger scale fountain. Cause it just doesn't put, there's not enough depth to push enough water. So to have a more robust fountain piece in the middle, it's just not physically possible based on the depth of that pond. Because it's just, there's just not enough water to push up. So.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Jeff. Brian? Number three, is that you sewer upgrade or is that Brent?
On that, sir. Obviously this is an ongoing project that we.
Brian, pull your mic down, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is an ongoing project. We've had discussions on three and threes and during budget and what have you. But there are three major projects that have been identified as priorities. The first two are the capacity building projects. That's cap contends that should take priority due to the understanding with D N R. Where they actually moved our existing plant in Davenport that we share with them to the joint use sewer committee from twenty-six million gallons a day up to forty million gallons a day, which was extremely helpful for both our Iowa cities here in, in this area to grow. Then we continually to have a series of meetings with the joint sewer use committee and the D N R on expanding several other projects such as, you know, the annexation and eventually searing of the area that is off of Chriswell. And then obviously the lift station, which Brent, I believe, informed you on is it, correct me if I'm wrong, Brent, is it going to be bid this fall?
Yes, Spencer Creek lift station's moving along well. We've cleared a few additional hurdles just in the last week or two with D N R. Should be looking at a early summer bid and hopefully construction starting yet this fall.
Thank you. Facility needs, Decker, why don't you start with this?
I will, your honor. So the, the requirement for the council and, and we kind of brought this forward is we are now pretty much, there's no space to expand in this building. We've expanded every which way but loose. And the notion is that we would consider building a new police station north of the post office on the ground that we own, just west of the Public Works building. And that once the police would be relocated, then City Hall would have the ability to expand here and, and have plenty of space for us for a number of years. When we did this building, we said we would probably be here twenty to twenty-five years. It's almost exactly twenty-five years, which blows my mind. And now we're pretty much packed to the gills. We are going to upgrade. At least it's in the budget to upgrade the fire side to do the build out for the residential quarters on the far west end of this building. But any other expansion would, it doesn't make any sense and there's just no room to do it. So we would expect to do a referendum for this. And likely that would happen in twenty twenty-five and November of twenty-five. We've hired Bray Architects to lead us through that process. Brent and Brian and Keith, a number of us have been involved with them. Brent's probably the most knowledgeable of all the work that's been done so far. But, and Brent, if you want to just encapsulate where we're at now. But we're working very hard to get us to a place where we can get some concept drawings and be able to show what it is we think we'll be able to do and what kind of needs those are to move to a referendum in twenty twenty-five. Brent?
Yeah, the biggest hurdle that we've cleared so far with Bray is to finish the space programming for both standalone new police station. And then a renovated city hall. Currently, the police occupy about eleven thousand square foot of this building. They have maybe another four thousand with auxiliary buildings at the rear. In projecting out increased staffing needs for them. Looks like that space need would be about two and a half times that. They were at roughly about thirty-nine thousand square foot. That includes a, a good amount of indoor garage, which could, depending on budget, could end up just being regular surface parking. And then City Hall in total is about twenty-three thousand square feet. And the projected needs for all of the departments, including moving the Parks Group that's currently at the community center to City Hall is right at about that same number. So I think that that jives with what everyone's been thinking that we could comfortably move all the staff here with a, a major remodel of the police area once they left the facility.
So we're continuing to work through the space needs. As you know, and on the community center side, we've kind of committed ourselves to probably five years there. We'll have to look at what that future brings, but we could accommodate if we need to, the park staff to move here. And then assuming a successful referendum and the size of the building and the, the police department would be ample for today and probably a good thirty-five to fifty years of space for, for the P D. So we're taking our time and working our way through it. We feel pretty comfortable where we're at today. We've got a lot of work to do. To be able to figure out what that real cost would be. And then likely have to have a successful referendum to make it happen, your honor.
Any thoughts, comments? All right, let's move to number five. Decker, maybe you'd start that one too.
This is, um, this is pretty complicated, but what you charged us to do was to look at any additional opportunities for financial contributions to infrastructure, particularly as it related to streets. That when we put those new streets in like Fifty-third, Devil's Glen, particularly on Fifty-third and, and Tanglefoot, and Greg knows this better than I know it. These were cases where we put new roads in and folks had agricultural deferments. So trying to assess the third and fourth lanes is difficult to do because ag deferred wouldn't allow you to do that. But are there other opportunities for us to assess any additional laneage that we can? When we put that in, particularly if a development does come to be, how does, how does that extra roadway length sidewalks get placed in and who pays for them? Brent, do you want to help me out with where we're at today?
Yeah, we, to your point, Deckard, we've been struggling to find, we've been trying to review some other municipalities policies. There, there aren't a lot of them that I would say are formal policies across the state, at least that we've been able to find. And I think finding a one size fits all policy is going to be tough. Um, reason for that is of the ground that we really have left. Let's say just south of the interstate, you know, a lot of these areas have developed so quickly that, um, Devil's Glen, for example, is essentially fully developed north of 53rd pending the, the, um, Bush Row development right at the corner, but I think that was probably the most recent one that, that kind of brought this to the forefront. And then what, what we're going to have to decide is, well, we've had all this development adjacent to it. We're coming back in now and needing to widen. Well, how do we, how would we justify that that needs to be proportionally applied to just one development? Because we've let all these other developments occur that did not have to contribute towards that. You know, is it going to be something that we can base off volume of traffic? So if you're adding 15% more traffic on a road, do you pay that proportional amount? Um, you know, items like a traffic signal or something, um, very black and white should be easy. That should be a development's cost if they're, they're adding to that. Or if we're having to do something full reconstruction, you know, like out at Forest Grove with the TBK and FG80. Um, the infill stuff is, is still a bit of a struggle, but, uh, we're going to keep working towards that and trying to, to put something together for you.
Anything for Brett on this one?
Yes, Greg J.
Just a quick comment on it, Your Honor. I was around when the city went away from special assessments because they became a very difficult issue for the council. In order to do a special assessment, you have to be able to show that the cost you're imposing bears a reasonable relationship to the use of the property that's being assessed so that you can't, for instance, simply say, uh, we're going to assess a hundred dollars for every lineal foot of house. Because a hundred dollars is an arbitrary number. And so you have to figure out how much burden does this house put on this infrastructure in order to come up with a reasonable nexus to the cost you want to impose. Secondly, to do a special assessment requires six votes of the council. So that whenever this goes forward, everybody's going to have to agree that this is an appropriate assessment. The residents can get together and file an objection. When they file an objection called a remonstrance, the vote changes from six to seven. And there's a huge pressure on the ward alderman, wherever you're doing the improvement to vote against the improvement and support the people who have actually taken the time to file an objection to the proposed improvement. Because of that, in the late eighties, early nineties, the city decided there simply wasn't enough benefit to the city to go through this process and went away from the special assessment procedures. That's just some background information, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anything else on this one? All right, number six.
Did have a question.
Jerry, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. So when the city made that decision, whatever it was, 20, 30 years ago, did the city and the council have any ideas moving forward on how they were going to fund these?
City was going to pay for it, 100%.
Belmont Road's.
Where assessments were put in place, for instance, were on sidewalks. Whenever you wanted to extend a sidewalk, the city would charge the homeowner a certain amount of money for the sidewalk. And the homeowner would say sidewalk doesn't benefit me. It benefits all my neighbors who go up and down my street. But my sidewalk's just going to cost me to shovel it. So, um, the idea of trying to come up with the nexus was very difficult. Plus the pressure on the elected officials became very important.
And frankly, at that time, we were not growing at the pace we were growing today. So it was easy. You could get, you know, we STP money, for instance, and we got Belmont Road put in, but Belmont got defeated twice by, by remonstrance votes, um, where the council tried to push it through and couldn't get it done. And we ultimately got SDP dollars and the state helped pay for it, but that's the only way that got in.
Just before I got hired in 85, the city had a big issue on Devil's Glen Road going from two to four lanes. And my predecessor, remember at that time, the city got assessment waivers for subdivisions and the assessment waiver basically said, we're going to never challenge a waiver, uh, an assessment. We're never going to raise any objections to it. Uh, if you want to assess us ground, assess us cost of something, the city can do it and the residents have to live with it. The issue was whether the developer by giving an assessment waiver could waive the first amendment rights of the ultimate property owner to object to the assessment, even though ultimately they have to live with it. My predecessor at that time said, no, the first amendment rights take priority. People can file an objection even when an assessment waiver is in place. And therefore, uh, enough people objected to Devil's Glen at that time, south of middle was trying to go from two to four lanes that that project was defeated. And so the city ended up paying for the widening of Devil's Glen from two to four lanes.
Anything else on this one? All right, Brian. Can you give an update on the residential street standards?
Yeah. So currently our city standards allow for either concrete or asphalt, um, streets. Uh, so when a new subdivision goes in, we're seeing primarily the developer wants to put in concrete streets rather than asphalt streets. And, um, obviously concrete streets last longer, but yet in the long run, when they have to be replaced and there's joint failure and whatnot, um, it costs quite a bit more. So what we're doing is we're evaluating several things, uh, Brent and I and his team, uh, investigating like the initial cost, the final cost, life cycle analysis of these particular streets. We're looking at potential possibilities of increasing bond lengths, um, on concrete versus asphalt. Uh, because I honestly think that asphalt streets in the residence, um, in residential areas are better than concrete streets. And the fact that we can just come in there in 15, 20 years and just mill off, if the base is prepared properly, just mill off an inch and a half, two inches and put it back. And we have another long life, long lasting street that'll last another 15, 20 years. Where concrete, on the other hand, it's a full depth reconstruction and there's a lot of, um, issues with uh, disturbances and, and things like that and with utilities and, um, access in and out for their, for the residents. So we're developing a white paper that will be presented to council to show you everything that we're investigating and then we can look at, uh, different options, uh, moving forward with how we want to address this.
Thoughts, questions there? All right, we're moving to the policy agenda.
We are. Um, uh, Jason has done a little work on, on the grant writing capacity, but he's basically had a couple of things going on with the budget and the bond sale. So this is kind of taking a back burner. But he assures me he'll have some research done on this.
Thank you.
And then I know Chris is about to have a heart attack with specific annexation, but, um, we think we've covered this almost to death, but I don't know. I didn't want to give him the opportunity not to say a word.
I think it's, it's, I think we all do know we do have a specific, um, annexation that, uh, that will become, it's been before you, it will be coming before the Iowa, um, Development Board. Um, it's actually been delayed a little bit as there's some, um, bridge work that the county is finishing up. So it's not going to, going to be formally approved by, um, the, uh, city development board until then. Um, in addition to the specific annexation, we, we do have and Mark can elaborate. Um, but in the comp plan, we've adjusted the future annexation area to incorporate, uh, going a little bit further east as, as has been, um, discussed by Brian and Brent, and then also to the north and west a little bit. So.
The only thing I had to add to that, Chris, is it sure, it doesn't include developed neighborhoods that are outside of the city. So we're, we'd only annex undeveloped.
Right. We, we aren't interested in any, um, in any involuntary annexations and, um, and we're not looking to, uh, to take over the, the developed portions east of the city. Um, we're just looking to see what, where's the reasonable lines for the city to grow. And, and I think that, uh, between the comp plan and the specific one, I think we're in good shape here.
Thoughts? All right. Thank you. Three on the policy agenda, TBK sports complex phase two.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes, Your Honor. Thanks again. Uh, very quick, Iron T scheduled to open this May. Ora will break ground in May. McDonald's will break ground and be under construction in May. Site work for the new hotel is done and they expect to commence construction this spring, would expect to open in the spring of 25. All of the multi tenant buildings that you see that are constructed currently are leased, except for one small space. I believe they have 1,200 square feet available. But all in all, every one of those spaces is leased. More multi tenant buildings have gone through site plan and been reviewed and approved already, uh, with construction this summer. Most of them are already leased as well. And, uh, the new sports facility, the new indoor sports facility that is due north of the Iron T, some 110,000 square feet under roof will start construction this summer and they expect to open in January, February of 25 to host indoor sports.
Wow.
Yeah, baby.
Bada boom, bada bing. Keeps on rolling.
Nice. UCR Holdings made their announcement to the southwest corner.
Yes, that's correct. Southeast corner, yeah.
East corner, sorry.
Yes, that's correct. So QCR Holdings, uh, corporate office will be there. Uh, we have not seen the actual concept plans yet. I think they're going out for architecture. But we would expect a substantial, uh, investment by QCR Holdings, uh, in that southeast corner as well. Which is going to be a really, really nice project that, as you've said all along, Your Honor, uh, it's a catalyst and we're starting to see that catalytic conversions.
Nice. Yeah. Nice. Hey, thoughts, questions here?
How many people will be working at the QCR?
Do we know? Uh, I'm not sure. Um, definitely in the hundreds.
Oh, okay.
I, I want to say they suggested to us somewhere around that 150 range, uh, but I'm just not certain for that, uh, council member Brown. But again, the good thing about that and/or a businesses like that, that are daytime white collar jobs, those are the people that are going to be supporting those businesses out there on the weekdays, which we all know was something that's certainly vital to the success of that corridor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, Scott.
Perhaps you can remind the council and the citizens to, um, you know, taxable valuation of what's being built out there. I know there've been some comments on some social media that's like, whoa, why don't they give more money to, you know, the sports complex, et cetera, you know, sort of sarcastic. But what people need to be reminded of, I think, is what an economic generator that is and some of the things that actually create value.
Sure. Certainly. Thank you, Councilmember Nauman. That's a very good point. And when we struck the development agreement for phase two, the developer and the city agreed to carve out 25% of the new TIF increment to help support infrastructure projects. Now we all know that that's going to help support that pedestrian gateway bridge. To the question you ask, at that time, we contemplated, and Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we contemplated a new assessed value of about $32 million, uh, on that east side. We, we know today in conversations with the development team that they're going to exceed a hundred million dollars in new taxable valuation on that east side. And I think what's very, very cool and even more so to the point Mary Gallagher has made about this being a catalyst is we're now seeing professional service white collar office locating out there in the ancillary areas like QCR Holdings, for example, that's going to be, I would speculate that it's going to be north of 25 to 30 million and value, and taxable value. That's not TIFT, there's no incentives, there's nothing that is part of a development agreement associated to that. So what we have been able to start and create and grow and cultivate out there is now yielding ancillary benefits and gains. Um, with new commercial tax valuation that we did not even expect and nor have we incentivized. So what we thought would be 32 million, we're estimating to be north of a hundred million plus ancillary taxable valuation. That's not even part of a development agreement area. We know as well through Dave Harrell at Visit Quad Cities that there has been over 2 million visitors over the age of 16, because they can't track below 16, uh, to that area in the last 18 months. And we know since 2019, there's been nearly seven million visitors to that complex. Um, I would challenge the state of Iowa to say that they've seen a different development across the state has yielded more gain for this state of Iowa than this complex for Quad Cities.
$50 million a year of other people's money being spent here.
Indeed.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Awesome. All right. Uh, let's see, we're now on number, uh, four.
Thank you, Your Honor. Engineering staff continues to identify and prioritize all of our streets within our pavement network, uh, through our pavement management program. Uh, this has been brought up at the budget session, uh, budget discussions that we need to spend more money and fall back onto our residential streets. But it's important to note that our annual programs, such as our street reconstruction, street resurfacing, uh, full depth patching program, alley rehabilitation program and pavement restoration programs. These all, uh, silos, so to speak, are all geared towards our residential street network. And this year alone, we're spending 3.6 million dollars, uh, in our residential streets. So, um, I know the question came up that we're spending a lot of money in arterials and not taking care of our neighborhoods, but we are like, uh, once again, we are spending uh, over $3 million this year alone, three, uh, 3.6 million in our residential street network.
Thanks, sir. Any thoughts there? Appreciate the hard work. Let's move to Magnolia Hawthorne, Mr. Clay.
So, Your Honor, I think we've, um, we've done a great job over the last couple of years, Mark's team making sweeps after the uh, trash pickup. One of the complaints the council had was how trashy that area looked. I think if you drive down there now on almost any day, uh, the behavior has changed, uh, based on Mark and his team. Um, there's been new lighting added in that area. And I think the chief would tell you that our, uh, incidents of crime are, are pretty much. Yeah, exactly. Pretty much down. Uh, this area is kind of just taking care of itself a little bit. Um, there've been some new landlords, uh, changeover that have made some investments. And Mark's also concentrated on a few landlords that, uh, had some hearing issues. Um, but we've been able to convince them, uh, to pay a little more attention. And right now this area looks pretty good and we're, uh, we're satisfied with our progress. So any physical design today, we haven't, uh, we didn't allocate any dollars for that, but we still think that's possible if, if needed and we would move in that direction. But right now we're, we're satisfied with where we're going.
Speaking of Mark, you want to do number six?
Really just, just south of there. And we were just talking about the Magnolia Hawthorne area is, uh, the flood buyout program, which is kind of on the bend of Duck Creek as it approaches, I said before there, uh, the edge of our city. Um, that buyout program continues to be, uh, enthusiastically funded by the state of Iowa and FEMA. It's flow through dollars. Uh, you can see kind of in the report, what we're working on is, is a contiguous area to be used as park and open space. And we're getting attention from partners now. We've been doing this long enough. We're starting to build that collection of property. Remember this is a voluntary program. So we have to meet people where they're at when they're ready to sell and when they're not. Um, but we've got about 30 homes that have been bought and raised over the last 10, 12 years. Um, you know, we're starting to square some, some area off. And the uses for that area now, really the vision of the future is what I'm excited about because I think this could be an impact both for the neighborhood we just talked about to provide park access to, um, what is kind of a low income area and doesn't have, um, easy park access to date. And also work on things like water quality, habitat improvement. We're partnering with MRCTI, the mayor is, is very familiar with. And they have partnered with Ducks Unlimited to look at water quality programs that could be, uh, provided in this area, perhaps through grant funding and things like that. We've asked for a little money in budget to help, um, co-pay for some of that, if you will. Uh, one of the possible, uh, programs is a grad student from, uh, University of Georgia, partnered with Ducks Unlimited to help us do a vision for the area and have a vision that we can sell to our potential partners, um, in, in creation of the park. We've also tagged this in the park master plan as an area for future development of a park space. So really looking down the road, how this might be used and how this might benefit the citizens of the Magnolia Hawthorne area of the, of that north overall, um, and improve water quality in Duck Creek. I just a lot of wins for the city here. Um, and most of this has cost us 10%, 20%. Right now the, um, the buyouts are 100%. So we're not even paying anything for the buyouts. The feds are paying all of it. I'd be happy to answer questions.
No, great job. Anybody have questions? Thoughts? Yes, Greg A.
Greg A, there you go.
That's right, but A and J are also kind of hard to differentiate.
Yeah. That area that you've got, you want, you call it squared off. How many houses are still in that? I mean, ideally, if you could just go in and take care of it, how many?
Don't hold me to it. I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say we've got half of that area purchased.
Okay.
It's a, it's a little patchy still, you know, again, we meet people where they are. So if they're not ready to sell, we spot back another day.
About half, okay.
Yeah, I'd say about half.
Okay.
And then others like the, if you look at the map, the kind of the aqua colored green map, the, the part to the north, that piece entirely done. the the part to the north, that piece entirely done. In fact, that's where we're planning to do a demonstration project with Beddendorf Schools, do kind of an outdoor pollinator lab environment that students from the nearby elementary school, the high school and the junior high could do projects in where they they plant pollinator habitat, kind of study and watch it. So that's on the horizon right now. So we have areas that are usable, we're ready to start using this instead of just having it be torn down in mode. We want to, we want to see the next thing happen. And you can tell I have a little bit of passion about it. It's one of my funner things I get to do, if funner is a word.
Thank you.
Jerry.
Thank you, your honor. You mentioned annual spring cleanup. Is that a cleanup where we hire a contractor or is that a cleanup where we solicit volunteers like we do downtown?
Yeah, I would.
And get the volunteers to help.
Yeah, right. I love that question. So that's actually to the project beforehand, this, if I can go backward to Magnolia Hawthorne. So we do, we fund a cleanup on the neighborhood side of I seventy-four, just on the on the neighborhood side of the fence, because a lot of debris on that fence line has come from Interstate seventy-four. Now, our public works crew last week did the interstate side of, I believe it was our crew, might have been DOT, but I think it was our crew, did the interstate side of seventy-four. So the neighborhood is is challenged because they're getting a lot of debris in the neighborhood that's coming off off of I seventy-four, not the resident's fault. So we we do that on both the interstate side and on the interior side, kind of free of charge, if you will, and we contract for it. It's honestly a few hundred dollars, but it gets us a lot of goodwill. I would love to do a larger neighborhood cleanup event where we we bring the neighbors out and do it kind of together. You know, I've got a hard hat I could wear and I'd be happy to do that and kind of grow that program. One of the things we just did was a was an education program. We sent out over two hundred letters to residents and landlords. And the amount of calls we've gotten back from residents trying to go, okay, how do I comply with my cart storage? How do I comply with my recycled bin storage? It is challenging in this neighborhood because it wasn't built in today's environment where we have recycling and garbage bins. They don't have areas to store those. Back in the day, you just set your garbage on the curb and the garbage man came and picked it up and there was no recycling when these were built. So they are trying to comply. We're really happy with with that effort and I would love to grow a larger cleanup effort in the area if it can be funded somehow.
Yeah.
The one, the one that we do downtown has been very successful.
Yeah.
In fact, last weekend was one at Leach Park and there were, you know, dozens of volunteers came out to clean up Leach Park.
I think would also build some goodwill. So I, we do the one that I mentioned, that's already programmed, we already got that in a budget. I would love to do a larger scale effort where it's kind of a cleanup day.
Thank you. Anything else on this one? We kind of went through seven, the Leach Park and West District. Any questions there or thoughts? All right, let's move over to the management agenda. Rather than go through each one of these, if you have questions on a specific one, maybe get a quick update there. We talked about, you're well aware of the pedestrian bridge, I'm sure, and the safer grant for firefighters. We just talked about FEMA.
Negotiations are done.
Yeah, well, maybe a quick update on stormwater. Detention ponds.
Yeah, a couple of things. We've had some dedicated funding for additional detention or detention improvements over the last few years. If you'll remember, two years worth of funding went towards acquiring a piece of ground and then we've been able to successfully construct an expanded basin on the west side of Middle Road, adjacent to the Haley Heights neighborhood, basically immediately south of our Hopewell Pond. We bought that piece of ground, we knew the area south of there. Long Pigeon Creek has experienced quite a bit of erosion, there's not a lot of detention in the area. We've essentially doubled the size of that basin over the last year. We were able to kind of double our money on that one and utilize that fill dirt on the Forest Grove project. So we saved money from having to truck dirt in, we were able to construct that basin. There's still a little bit of work that'll be left this year. But we are going to make it a point with the funding that's allocated in the C I P this year to pick off whether it's three, four, five, however many we can do with with the funding that's allocated. Some of the larger basins that are not the multi-stage outlet that I think we've discussed with you that, you know, previously, you only had to address basically a hundred year post-developed storm and let it release at a five-year rate. Now we take it down to one year, a two-year and a five-year. Some of those ponds that we've got really large, twenty-four, thirty-inch outlet pipes where the waters, you know, the everyday events is just blowing through. We're going to go back in and try to retrofit those. We'll kind of call it maybe a pilot program this year to figure out how many we can do, given the budget, because we do have to recreate some of the hydraulics, because those are twenty-five, thirty years old, some of these ponds. And unfortunately, the drainage studies don't exist any longer. But that is the plan this year and we've already, we've had all the basins inspected about four years ago. So we've got a good matrix on where to begin and we're looking forward to making some of those improvements.
Thank you, sir. You got the list of the quiet zones and the things we're trying to do there. Any questions from council or thoughts other than less roll? Jerry?
Thank you, your honor. Are we getting complaints about the train noise right now?
Sure.
Okay, because I haven't received any, so I was wondering if.
I'll give you a number out the next time they call me.
I figured being in the first ward, I'd get them if there were some, but.
I think they're mostly in the east end of town where the private crossing.
Okay.
And there's, it just travels up the draws, but we get them from time to time.
Okay.
Can I hear him very loudly?
Could I add one thing about the quiet zones decker that just came up a week ago? We had, we've done two separate studies, I think you're aware, that we did from Forty-second Street West. And then we did a joint study with Riverdale that would take, continue to zone through Riverdale and all the way to Sixty-second Street Court. In talking with the rail staff themselves, because when you implement the improvements, so if we got to add an extra set of gates or lights or whatever, maybe the rail actually does that work themselves, we just have to pay for it. I was surprised to hear they're telling me that it's about fifteen months from start to finish, just to get a single new signal put in place. So we had these staged out over about a three-year stretch. I think we're really going to have to go back and reprioritize this fall and maybe look at front loading the intersections that have gates and signals that needed and get that work allocated and, you know, we'll have to figure out how that, what that dollar amount is and how that works with CP. But I was really surprised to hear it's taking that long. And, you know, I don't think anyone on council would have, would want to see this drag out over a five, six, seven year period.
Correct. Anything else? So, your honor, we know that you.
Hold on, we got, I'm sorry.
So the railroad is, the conductor is required to blow the whistle if the crossing is not of a certain quality or whatever you want to call it. Not a play.
Yeah, so if the quiet zone is not established, the only caveat to the quiet zone is that they are still given the ability to blow the horn if they deem it, if they see something that needs their attention, yes.
But the, but the decision to blow the horn or not normally is the quality of the crossing.
Yeah, so.
The safety of it.
Yep, there's a various numbers of designs you can add to it. It's either generally speaking, the four quadrant gates, so one in all four directions, or two quadrants with a median to prevent people from driving around the gate. So some of our intersections or crossings, we'll be able to just build a median and it already meets the requirements. But the median can't be done if there's driveways within a certain distance and you got to restrict access. So I think we're about half and half probably that we'll be able to do for pretty cost-effective measures and some that are going to be fairly expensive.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Anything else on this one? Decker, you're going to take us through those last couple of pages here, the management agenda.
I'm just going to suggest that unless the council has something that you want to discuss, we could move to any items that staff members want to just highlight. But for the most part, I think you can read this unless you have a question or unless a staff member wants to make a point about something. And we know we have an executive session to go into.
Right, department heads, anything that you were hoping to convey that you weren't given an opportunity to convey? Everybody wants to talk. I knew it. All right, well, thank you all for your good work. Council, any questions on that portion of our presentation, the management agenda? High and non-priorities? If you do, obviously get the Decker or the department head, who I'm sure would be glad to shed some light on those things.
I just wanted to say, your honor, that everybody's done great work to get us all the reports. The reports are, I think, really accurate and I think we've had great participation in all of these, almost all these issues where something's been done or something is in progress. I'm really pleased with where we're going here. So thanks to everybody at that table for all the work they're doing. It's pretty phenomenal, so.
Got three months left to get it all completed.
Thank you very much.
Teasing, we understand. Good job, everybody. All right, I have nothing to add to tomorrow night's agenda. Does anybody else have anything to add? All right, we're going to take the agenda up tomorrow. At this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter executive session pursuant to Iowa Code Section twenty-one five sub one sub C for the purpose of discussing pending litigation strategy.
Second.
All right, Michelle, would you please call a roll?
Adamson.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Jagger.
Hi.
Nauman.
Hi.
Sexer.
Hi.
Baden.
Hi.
Felchinsky.
Hi.
All right, we have now entered executive session. And with that, I'd like to ask everybody to please clear the room. We appreciate you being here. All right, fantastic. Now we've exited executive session and at this time I'd entertain a motion that the item we discussed remain on consent. Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed will take up the matter we discussed in executive session on consent agenda. This time I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. I think we had Nauman and Pelchinsky.